He's still got two. Glad he didn't move to the middle there. Thank you. Good morning, everybody. The time is, well, shoot, the time is 9:03 a.m. It's Monday, June 26, 2023, and I'm calling this special call meeting, the B County Commissioners' Court to Order. We're physically located at B County Courthouse, Commissioners' Court Room Number 110, 105 West Corpus Christi Street, people, Texas 78102. That was the agenda item number one. The call to order, moving on to agenda item number two. Everybody please stand and join Commissioner Lenny in a brief prayer.
Good morning, Father. We come to you today and give you thanks for allowing us to wake up and spend another day here on earth and do your will. We ask that you be with all of us today, dear Lord, and some of those that are traveling and others are here working. We ask that you send some rain our way. We could definitely use it. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the Texas pledge, honor and the Texas sign. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible. Thank you. Welcome. That was the Pledge of Allegiance. We're on to agenda item number four, which is recognition of visitors. This is not public comment, but if you want to identify yourself for the record, you're more than welcome to. We do have agenda item number six, which is coming up, which is public comment, which will give any member of the public the opportunity to address Commissioners' Court without interruption or obituary, if we can hold it. And so at this time, I'd ask if anybody would like to recognize themselves? If not, welcome. Thank you. If you're on the agenda, you know, actually, do you want to recognize yourselves? You want to?
My name's Andrea. I'm new here. I'm with the paper.
Awesome. Thank you, Andrea. Welcome, welcome, welcome. So are you the new, are you going to be our B news reporter? Okay, awesome. What other public entities are you going to be handling?
Just the South Texas local newspapers. So the Goliad, this one, about five other local.
So you're going to handle all the Commissioner Courts and ISDs?
Yeah, and there's a few others.
Okay. Well, good luck. Welcome. Really glad you're here.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Moving on, is there anybody else who wanted to identify themselves? If not, welcome. Moving on, agenda item number five, Commissioners' Court opening remarks. Commissioner Lenny, I'm going to give you the floor, sir.
Well, thank you.
Go ahead.
It's actually been pretty quiet. We, uh...
He's just getting warmed up. It's okay. It's okay. Sure. Go ahead.
Okay.
No rush, no rush.
No, 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 no. We started up a fan drive for citizens of B County and teamed up with Meredith Wicker there at the Blue Ribbon, and so far it's been really successful. We've, uh, we've had probably 50, 60 donations, fans, and reached out to the adult daycares and whatnot, been delivering. We're down to, as of Friday, like eight fans. So people that are really in need of them, you know, it's hot. It's unusually hot so soon. So getting those handed out to people in need. And the other thing is I want to commend Robbie Guerrero on, uh... I called him Friday. There was a huge pile, I mean huge pile, of construction material that was dumped on Beagle Road, right there at the entrance of the old city pit or dump site. And lo and behold, we found a name on a cardboard box and an address, and it was a construction company that is building a house there on Cock Street, Blueberry Hill. And so got ahold of the owner of the company, and he got ahold of the guy that did it. He was actually in Rockport, quote, "cleaning up another spot." And he made him drive back to Beeville, load everything up. And then I told Robbie to please have a deputy out there and give him a citation. So that all took place, and he was cited. Thank you, Robbie, for that. Slowly but surely, we're getting it cleaned up, you know? So our eyes are always out there. You guys, the people in the public don't realize that we get phone calls, "I just saw this vehicle dumping over here. I got a picture of it. I got a license plate for you." You know, people don't realize that there are eyes out there all the time, everywhere. So just take your stuff to the dump. That's all you got to do. It's going to be a whole lot cheaper than paying a fine, I can assure you. But that I will pass to my left.
Commissioner, I appreciate that. And the two Commissioners on here gave me their time, Judge, so...
Absolutely. You take them.
You know, we have lots of time this morning, and I've got a whole bunch of stuff here.
Everybody settle in and get comfortable. If you have food or drinks, you're welcome to.
You can enjoy it at this point in time. But I'm going to keep it short because we have a conference in San Antonio. We need to be there sometime this afternoon, so I'll start finished by lunch.
Take your time, take your time.
Want to remind everybody about the championship barbecue cook-off in Pettis, June 30th and July the 1st. And for the newspaper, for the new lady, they have gotten this sanctioned by the legislature, and it is a championship cook-off. So there's going to be at least 50 booths and barbecue folks there, and it's going to be big doings in Pettis this coming, what, Friday and Saturday? We've gotten several calls about the intersection of Loop 351 and the Mineral Highway 673. There's some delineators that have been placed on the right-hand side of the road heading west. They are legal. They were required by TechStop after some accidents happened there, some mishaps. I wanted to find out the whole story, so I called TechStop Leadership and talked to them this last week. And they said that one thing that even happened to their own staff, they had a TechStop truck with a trailer that was turning right on 673 heading north, but there was a long line of cars in that far right lane that blocked the lane, and they couldn't turn. So they got authorization and put those in. I explained what was happening, and they said, "Yes, we understand. What we're going to try to do..." They said, "We're through with the work we're doing on 351, but we're going to widen it." I didn't know this. "We're going to widen 673, I think, in 2025." They said, "We will look at that intersection." He said, "What you get into, if you go out there and take a look, when you turn right off of 351 on 673, there's drainage right there on the right." They said, "That's the problem, because whenever you put in a right-hand turn lane, you have to widen that lane so that when they enter the next traffic, there's room for them to go in without getting over to that lane." But they are going to take a look at that. He understands totally the problems this created. He said, "What was interesting, when they first put it in, they got all kind of real positive comments. Then all of a sudden, it turned." And he said, "When it turned, it was completely the opposite. It's negative now." But I've had people at Hall Haver living talk about the problems they're having. I've had truck drivers talk to me. But TechStop is taking a look at it. As you know, with government, nothing happens really fast. But then when it happens, it's like, golly, it happened last night. So they're looking at it. It has to be programmed in. They're not sure they can do it, but if you drive out there and look, there is a big drainage right there in that corner that they're going to have to figure out how to do something with because all those drainage structures go onto that road, right at that intersection. So I'm not sure how they're going to do it. But one thing I have learned with my few years in government, if the government really wants to do something, they'll do it. Doesn't matter what it costs or what kind of engineering. They will get it done. And they realize that people would like to see that done. So just to give everybody an update on 351 and 673, because I've gotten several calls. The other thing, we've got show and tell this morning. Y'all know how much we appreciate the generous donation we got from the wind farm people or the bus stop in Mineral. That bus stop is complete. It has been. Roden Bridge did a fantastic job of finishing it out after we had it erected. We've got our fence behind it now, about four foot tall, to stop the kiddos from maybe walking off the backside. It's been utilized almost daily, not only by the parents waiting for their kiddos from school. Turns out Pettis is also using it now as long as Pawnee. But when I drive through there going to the ranch, I see ADP sitting under the shade. I see San Patricia Electric's under the shade eating their lunch. So it's being utilized. It's being kept very clean. But if we could, John, if I can have you, this is the sign that we've designed and Roden Bridge have made to put up at the bus stop. And it will be installed soon. We're real proud of it. And the ability provided to B County was a little over $30,000 through generous donations from Orsted. The Commissioners' Court is listed. We have our auditor listed. The Roden Bridge Administrator, Mr. Gonzalez, is listed. And the Orsted supervisor listed. All these folks had a big part in getting this done and getting this completed. And this is the final, the final chapter, and this will be installed soon. So I'm pleased with it. It's reflective. It's a large sign.
It's a large sign. It's much larger than I thought it was.
It's larger than I thought it would be, too.
It sounds like a regular-sized sign.
I didn't think, but it's a large structure, so it should have a large sign. We get a marks a lot of change.
It's P-F-E-R, right?
Anyway, that is the sign, and we're appreciative to Orsted for the donation. And the folks in Mineral have asked us not to put a light on this structure. And we're going to honor that unless we get a request from the schools that they're having problems at night. I don't think they will because it's not utilized that much at night. But I know that the people in Mineral understand that this facility is there for them to use. If they want to have a vegetable sale, they want to do something like that that's temporary, I don't think there's a problem. It's a public facility. So we don't want people camping under it. We don't want people living under it. But it is a very nice facility. And Judge, I know this is going to sound strange, but that's all I have, sir.
Some music tonight.
I appreciate it.
That's great.
Thank you.
Taking a sip. Is your bill okay?
We need to take a break.
You would.
All right. Thank you all both very much. I'll keep my opening remarks very brief. Again, to all our county employees, department heads, elected officials, we're in the budget season, so keep sharpening your pencils. Mrs. Kanto in her office, and I'll be getting back in touch with y'all shortly. We'll all be meeting here shortly. And it's going to be an interesting, interesting cycle. Once again, as many people may or may not be aware, the values in the county only impact, except for debt service, only impact the tax revenue from an apportionment basis by the taxpayers. Tax revenue by the county and other local governments is capped based on a percentage increase over last year's tax revenue. So every year, what B County and other rural counties across the state of Texas are facing are dramatically rising costs to continue to do the very thing that we've been doing in years past with an artificial cap on revenue to be able to support it. So every year, our revenue growth, if we go as high as a tax rate will allow us to go, or tax laws will allow us to go without going out for an election, is about, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Kanto, is about $300,000, $350,000, something like that. Two years ago, or three years ago, you know, our insurance, just for our insurance policy increased by about $300,000, forced us to make some difficult decisions with respect for insurance policy at the time. And it ate up most of the increase in tax revenue. That doesn't say anything about salaries, about fringe benefits, the employee, employee, employee cost component that doesn't actually get to the employees, right? Every dollar in a salary increase has with it a component part of, is it 45% about, 45 cents on the dollar of additional expenses that go into that. Things that make our work very difficult because the Commissioners' Court recognizes and acknowledges and understands the hard work of all of our employees and departments here in B County. And we recognize that we have limited funds, limited resources of which we can deploy and increase. And so, you know, in the last three years that I've been through this process, it's been, I've always been very impressed and appreciative, and I mean that sincerely, very appreciative of our department heads and elected officials with their acknowledgement and recognition of the difficult situation that this Commissioners' Court faces. And unfortunately, there's no end in sight. So, you know, taxes are no fun. I don't like paying taxes. I don't like having to see my taxes go up. But at the end of the day, I do prefer Mr. Gonzalez and his team having adequate supplies so that I can drive down our county roads and still have a suspension. I appreciate having our code enforcement department available so that our county roads aren't littered on each bar ditch with trash because we don't have the ability to monitor and enforce the very rules that we ask Officer Grudado to do. I can't tell you how much I appreciate it. I can't tell you how lucky we are in B County to have a dedicated law enforcement group, specifically our B County Sheriff's Office, but all of our law enforcement. And the amount of effort that they put in to keep us safe, not only during the day, not only on the freeways, but at night when we're alone. This is a rural community. Many of us live out in the country. And oftentimes, our law enforcement and our volunteer fire departments are the only ones that can be that lifeline, make the difference between life and death. However, we still face the same struggle and the same issues. You know, I think in years, in the years in the future, not right now, but starting about three to five years from now, I think it's going to reach a breaking point for many counties. And look forward to seeing what solutions there might be for us left without any options. A shrinking local government is the only tenable solution. But that's kind of negative, and I want to let you all also know that this Commissioners' Court, once we, one, we've been very, very fortunate with all the federal funds that we've received over the course of the last three years due to COVID, in large part perking Harvey to some degree as well, which was so, so long ago. The fact that we're just getting funds should be indicative to you of the ability of, kind of like what Commissioner DeWitt commented on, the ability of government to move at a snail's pace. But anyway, thank you to all of our county department heads and elected officials with your continued work with us, with Mrs. Kanto and us in trying to craft a budget that is balanced, that allows us to maintain our reserve funds so that in the event of some calamity, we do have a rainy day fund that we can reach into so that we can continue to maintain the services that we've come to enjoy, appreciate, and expect in B County. At this point in time, I'd like to change topics. And I'd like to ask everybody in this, in this Commissioners' courtroom to recognize a moment of silence for Officer Bob Meekins, who's a Sheriff's Office, Sheriff's, B County Sheriff's Office Deputy, passed away tragically and untimely last week. So if everybody would just join me in a moment of silence to reflect upon Officer Meekins and anybody else that you've lost this year. Thank you all very much. I'd only comment that that was merely one minute. It seems like quite a long time to sit and reflect. Bless you. But in reality, our law enforcement gives us their minutes every day. And it goes unanswered, unrecognized, and it's not anything that they, that they expect, right? Our sheriff's deputies perform their obligations and their duties out of a sense of loyalty, love, and appreciation for this community and for the rule of law. Officer Meekins will be missed. His funeral services will be later this week. They're going to be conducted at the B County Expo. On Wednesday, June 28th, there'll be a public viewing from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. His service, a celebration of life service, will occur on Thursday, June 29th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. Our thoughts and prayers are with Bob's family and friends as they struggle with this loss. We wish them all the best in the future. That's all I have for public, for public comment. That's public comment. That's all I have for my opening remarks. I move on to agenda item number six, public comment. Is there any member of the public wishes to address Commissioners' Court? Hearing none, we'll move on. Agenda item number seven, the following items are of an administrative nature. Commissioners' Court has been furnished documentation on each item, and all such items may be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a Commissioner or county judge.
To approve?
I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Moving on, discuss and consider action on the following items. Agenda item number eight, approve expo request for auditorium fee waiver from Ballet Poplorico de Beeville for their dinner and recital event on June 16, 2023. I don't see Ms. Constable Trevino in the office, in the room.
No, she's giving a CPR class to the kiddos right now.
Okay.
She couldn't make it. She texted me last night.
Okay, good to know.
But she's just asking for the, the fees to be waived for this event, if at all possible.
I, let's see, we have their form.
Move to approve.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number nine, approve expo request for attorney, for arena fee waiver, attorney fee waiver. Approve expo request for... You never hear, you never hear those words come out of lawyers' mouths, though, sir. Absolutely not. Remember, guys, in a pinch, the attorney gets paid first.
You've been practicing. Stuff's coming out.
You can rewind and listen to that again.
Agenda item number nine, approve expo request for arena fee waiver from the B County Junior Lifestyle Homemaker Show for their playdates on September 1, 2, and 15, October 20, and November 17, 2023.
Move to approve with an explanation of what a playdate is.
Absolutely. Have a motion, have a second?
I have a second with the comment.
Oh, great. I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Commissioner DeWitt, you're first.
Basically, I think they're training horses.
Yes, sir.
So the terminology "playdate" is a little misconstrued here, but they are working with horsemen and the kiddos. That's all I had to do.
Wally, these dates are all available and good?
True.
Okay, just checking. Thank you.
Were you sitting there the whole time, Wally? And I just completely overlooked you at the last agenda?
Yes.
I apologize.
It's okay. I'm not usually on this side, Judge.
Yeah, I do. I looked back there. I'm like, well, he's not here. My sincere apologies.
There's plenty of space today.
Good. Good. Thank you for filling in that hole because it felt a little awkward. Ladies and gentlemen watching remotely, please come in person. It's so much more exciting. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda item number 10, approve agreement between Pettis Municipal Utility District and B County for repairs at the water and wastewater treatment facilities enough to exceed $45,000.
Move to approve. A comment?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner, do what you have for.
The comment basically is that through the American Rescue Plan and some other funds, we've been able to help the Pettis Municipal District with some very serious problems that they've been having with their water and sewer plants. And they were a foul of TCEQ and had been issued several letters. And TCEQ is being advised, each time we do this, I'm advising the Regional Director and Corpus as to what we're doing. And they're, to say that they're pleased with what's going on is an understatement. So I'm glad that government is able to help government and government, so to speak, is helping other government and all working together. It's working very well.
Wonderful.
I also wanted to add that there's a change on, that I was made aware of on the signature page. It still had the prior county clerk's name, so that has already been sent to our grant advent to switch that up. So, I mean, I know I sent this to the court.
We don't need to amend, we don't need to amend anything. That's perfectly fine. I bet I'll sign the revised agreement when we get it back.
Thank you.
Pending the vote. It could go either way, folks.
Yes, it could.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Well, vote is unanimous. Motion carries. Moving on. Dug out of that potential hold.
Thank you, Judge.
Risked, got a little ahead of myself here.
Yeah, I know.
Moving on, agenda item number 11. I have a feeling this transcript is going to come up in our lawsuit that they bring against us. Agenda item number 11, approve request for American Rescue Plant, ARP, funding to establish a third citizens' collection statement in Precinct 1. I turn this over to the ARP Committee slash Mrs. Kanto. Nope?
Slash Commissioner DeWitt.
Slash Commissioner DeWitt.
Well, Judge, I'm going to defer first to Commissioner Lenny since this is in his sandbox.
Absolutely. You know what? It's a liberty to know who's sandboxing citizens.
It is his sandbox, and I don't know whether you still have the information.
All right, Commissioner Lenny?
We'll go ahead.
We expect a full, do you need a PowerPoint setup?
We will go ahead for the record, just state that Commissioner DeWitt had initiated all this good stuff in my sandbox.
The meeting was going so well, folks.
It's gone awry.
Yeah, it has gone awry. Yeah, it has gone awry.
I'll take over when you're ready, sir.
All right. Now, Commissioner DeWitt was looking at doing a third collection station on, off of Beville Road, and it's the old city dump, I understand. We have the one that's Skidmore and one in Mineral, but looking at having a third one. There's a lot of people there in Blueberry Hill area and whatnot that could definitely benefit from having it there. We were discussing this in our ARP Committee and there's just a lot of unanswered questions right now as far as mostly money. Where it's going to come from, who's going to help? Is the city going to help with this? What's going on? And then understanding whether we can use money through Grant Works, through our ARP, the...
The interest.
The interest that we've incurred to do this so we don't have to actually use an engineer to do this, but we've done two of them already. There are just a lot of unanswered questions right now, so I don't feel that we'll be taking any action on this item until we get further information to know which way we're headed. But do you want to give a rundown on the...
Yes, Judge, and I can add to that somewhat. There's some new information that came in this morning. These are my estimates, best estimates I come with. To put that in, we're looking at site clearing, water well, septic system, feed collection structure, loading ramp, couple of storage sheds, electrical connections, and then the critical thing is the land. And to further what Commissioner Lenny was saying, that is the site of the third city landfill. Out on Beville Road, about oh, three quarters of a mile to the left was the entrance to the city landfill. It was decommissioned, and I'm thinking in the 60s. State laws changed and they couldn't do that anymore. Used to, it was dumped and buried and burned. The one before that I remember as a small child was between Cook Road and Archer. There's a series of soccer nets and baseball diamonds out there now. And the previous one, from what I understand, can't prove this, was Catty Corner from the post office downtown, the one back in the probably 1900s or early 20s. Was back in there in that area where HEB at one time had a building, got some misunderstanding. But the key to this is the land. The county has no land to put this on, the city does. And my vision is if we do this, we would need to purchase the land from the city at a nominal cost. We need about, Ray Craig from, or Mr. Gonzalez, about four acres?
Four, about three, four acres.
Three or four acres to put this on. It'd need to be fenced and all that sort of thing. But we need the land in our name. We got into this at both collection stations we had before, they were on leased property. Whenever you're leasing property and the lease owner changes due to death, marriage, sale, or whatever, sometimes the lease terms change. And we got into that in both locations and wound up, and Skidmore purchasing over a row of property to put it on, and we moved the one from Normana to Mineral. Okay, when we moved the one from Normana to Mineral, they really helped the people out in Pawnee because they didn't have to drive all the way to Normana. But the people in the west side of Beville and east side of Beville now can no longer drive to Normana, and it's quite a distance from there to Skidmore, there to Mineral. So they've approached us and they've approached Commissioner Lenny about a third collection station. That's why we're looking at it, and we're only looking at it. This is not something we have to do. I've made initial contact with the city of Beville. I talked to the code enforcement people, Crystal Longoria and Ms. Soto. Ms. Soto lives in Blueberry Hill and she says she's taking her trash to Mineral. She said it's quite a distance, one thing and another. They think it's a great idea. I've also talked to the Assistant City Manager, Mr. Chin, by phone. He thinks it's a great idea. None of the details are worked out. To put it in is about $140,000. If the city were to say, you know what, B County, if you'll pay for the survey, we'll sell you the land for a dollar. The land's going to cost us a lot of money and it's not worth it. Now, once it's in, here's where the real cost comes in, and it's a recurring cost forever. You're looking at, if the county runs it, staff, electricity, fuel, staff knowledge, because they, we don't, they're not provided a vehicle, they drive back and forth from their house and they operate it, they run the system. Miscellaneous light bulbs, brooms, maintenance supplies. But the biggie is the roll-off dumpster tipping fees. Every time one of those dumpsters is picked up and taken to Corpus, there's a huge cost to B County. My guesstimate is $65,000 a year. Now, to operate that setup, because I think it's going to collect more trash, which it's supposed to, than Mineral or Skidmore because of its proximity to Beville, because the citizens of Beville also live in the county, so they would be eligible to discard their materials out there. And we charge where the city doesn't when they dump there. They don't, we're not going to require a, you know, that they...
Water bill.
Water bill because it's for all the residents. But my best guesstimate is about $100,000 a year to operate that landfill, that collection station. Now, the county does not have that kind of funds. We don't have, we just talked about budget. We don't have extra.
Yes, sir, I didn't need it. I should have held off on that.
That's okay. We don't have an extra $100,000 to start a whole new system that really would benefit the folks of B County. It really would. We all agree to that. So we're going to need some input from the city of Beville. And right now, we haven't, nothing's been discussed as to who's going to do what or whatever. It's just in the original thinking stage. And I guess, Judge, the only thing that I would like to see come out of this agenda item is allowing Commissioner Lenny and I to continue to go forward to approach the city unofficially and find out if they're willing to maybe start a dialogue on whether we can do this or not do this.
Well, you unofficially have my permission.
Okay.
Thanks.
Absolutely. Yes, keep going. I think it's worthwhile. I think it's a great idea. Cost is a problem.
The cost is a problem. I think, I think everybody agrees it's needed. It will help. People want this, but we've got to figure out how to fund it. And the initial cost, $136,000, I think there's a place we can find those funds that the auditorium I have discussed, that's not the problem.
For the startup.
For the startup.
It's just the year-to-year cost.
Right. So to be, to put it down just like it is, we have the startup cost. We have that. But we don't have the operational cost. And I'm not willing to sit here and try to convince the court to go into an operation where it's going to cost us $100,000 or more a year and not have the money to do it. I don't think it's prudent because we have a lot of other things that are, that we need right on the edge of the precipice, and this can wait because we still have Mineral, we still have Skidmore, and Beville has theirs here inside the city limits. So Judge, with that, I'd like to move to the next item.
Okay. Do you have anything further, Commissioner?
No, it's good to me.
Thank you both for your explanations.
Mr. Gonzalez, do you have anything, sir?
No, sir.
Do you think this would be something we should continue to pursue if we can figure out how to fund it?
If you find out where to fund it, yes.
Okay.
All right, moving on.
Thank you, Judge.
Your will. Agenda Item Number 12, approve ARP Committee recommendation to approve the purchase of a mobile repeater for the emergency management center not to exceed $35,000.
Judge, we had our ARP meeting this last week. Emergency Management was there, and they have convinced us that they need two repeaters instead of one.
Okay.
And I'm not sure we can do that, this item says one, but...
It's going to be $40,000.
Be $4,000 total. Not to exceed $45,000. Right. Not to exceed $40,000.
Two repeaters is $40,000?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that's the purchase of the repeater and the installation.
And the radio. Is the radio included? I believe so.
I think so. I think that was everything we needed.
Without getting into the weeds, I'm comfortable if the, if the will of this Commissioner's Court is to, on this agenda item, to approve the purchase of two mobile repeaters for the emergency management center not to exceed $40,000.
That is my motion, sir.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Are there any objections to this motion or second? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda Item Number 13, approve and discuss change of scope for proposed Expo parking lot renovations. Another ARP Committee?
Yes, it exactly is. We talked about this in our meeting this past week, and I brought up the point that getting a third party to do the, all the labor cost out there on the grounds, the paving, is going to be an extremely high dollar amount, and we're reconsidering just including it in this next year's budget along with the Havant Road Bridge, do it. They don't have to do it with the whole thing, you know, at one time.
Doing parts.
Doing parts as they can, as they get time. Just, you know, comparing apples to apples on cost, it's what you're going to spend in getting a third party to go out there and do this is going to be astronomical, you know, when we have someone that can actually do it, but isn't purchasing material.
Is it wildly inappropriate to ask if we've reached out to any of the Irish travelers that usually come down this time of year, have extra paving material left over?
We have not, Judge. We haven't seen...
We'll put that on the list.
Do you have them on the rolodex? Are they on Bitvai? Maybe you can look at that, maybe that's a solution.
Right.
Yeah, just moving on.
Yep.
Okay, so no motions?
No, sir.
Moving further to Agenda, or moving on to Agenda Item Number 14, approve disposal of maintenance department inventory, being a 1999 Ford F-250, VIN number ending 7985, to be declared non-functionable, unsalvageable, and then placed for auction with CM Auction. Do I have a motion to approve?
Approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda Item Number 15, approve Texas Association of County's Health and Employee Benefits Pool Medical Renewal for fiscal year 2023, 2024. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve with a comment?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. We want to have Ms. Borrego present.
Please.
Ms. Borrego, tell us what you got.
She may take her...
Oh, well, we have the contract here that needs to be signed today, and I need to send it back to TAC as soon as possible because the 28th of June is our deadline to get the contract back to them signed and, you know, to seal the deal for our upcoming October to September's medical...
So no pressure.
All right, no pressure at all.
The vehicle's running, she's ready to go.
What's changed? Does it have any components?
Yeah, there is a change that now they have the...
Insurance committee.
An insurance committee has proposed that we put in alternate options to, to have the employees have a choice to go to PPO instead of HMO. So they don't have to go get any referrals to see specialists. But unfortunately, it doesn't come without a cost. The cost will be passed on to the employees if they elect this plan, or they can stay with, the option of staying with the HMO.
And when would they need to come to HR and speak to HR about changing the plan if that is something that...
Well, we have open enrollment during August of this year, 2023. So we have an online that you can go online and do it yourself, or you can have, talk to one of the representatives, except for medical, they won't come in. But of course, we can always call them, you know.
Is the, is the online, is a link to the online website, is that available on our HR website?
Some ways. It is. There's going to be an election box that you, you click, yes, you know, there's an election box that you're going to click, you know, which options you want. We have...
But will our employees be able to go to the B County website, go to the HR Department landing page, and find the link to that website to change their options from HR to PPO?
No, they would have to...
It's a portal.
Yeah.
It's a portal that is open when election, when open enrollment opens. And so it's going to, it's going to have all of our options on it, and that will be one of them.
And then we get a printout, HR, I mean, we, HR, we get a printout, and then I would have to physically go online to the medical side and update.
And you do it, you have to do it, okay.
Yes.
So how does, what does the employee need to do, looking forward to August? Let's say I wanted to switch to a PPO, it's August 2nd, what do I do?
You can reach out, you can reach out and get some more information from Jaime. We have all of it.
Come to us, HR, call us, or we can have, you know, we can talk to them when, we'll be there when we have our representatives, like for Colonial, for our cafeteria plan, we have representatives there. So we'll be present with them at that time, and if you have any questions on the medical side, we'll be there to answer them.
And that's in an open enrollment, when we have those dates that are open in August out at the Expo, we've had it in the past, of course, every year. And so Jaime, though, right now, he has all of the breakdown, and it's a dual option that TAC has come back to B County with just because we've expressed, we've expressed that option that we've needed to go not just HMO, but the PPO route. And so going back PPO to take everybody back is extremely expensive. That's why we moved. So, and our HMO did move, we did go down one tier, and that's because of cost. That was another $150,000 of cost we would have incurred, so we did drop one, one notch down. And then, of course, the PPO option is what they, they presented us with, and Jaime has all of the breakdown for each, you know, individual, children, family, spouse option.
And of course, what you elect in August will not be effective until October 1st. Just keep that in mind, too.
Thank you so much, Ms. Borrego.
Oh, you're welcome.
Just, I noticed in the documents that rates are going up around nine percent, nine, a little over nine percent, is that correct?
Um, well, yeah, it's around there. It's a little over seven.
Which we understand, and now are we going to continue to pay 100% of the employee?
If they want to remain in the HMO portion, it will be covered. If they want to go the PPO portion, that's what, like Colleen was saying, that will, the additional, from what the HMO to the PPO, that will go onto the employee if they decide to make that change. And those are the numbers that Jaime and Colleen, they'll have if, you know, you want to explore that option.
Okay. Because I, because I never saw a complete total cost.
It's, it's a tough one.
We can't figure it because some may and some may not.
Exactly. But in the budget, in the budget, we're putting the HMO cost because that's what the county's going to cover. And again, it will be the employee, if they want to go the PPO, that will be on them. So in the budget, it's going to be the HMO.
Okay.
Cost.
Okay.
That's it? Thank you both for your explanations, and thank you to our insurance committee for figuring out an option because that was something that was a tough pill for many people to swallow when we had to move to the HMO policy. So thank you all very much. Any further discussion?
Move to approve.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. I think we have two, two motions to approve and two seconds, and I'm glad they aligned, so...
They did, they were the same.
Once again, you know, it's when your government works together. Agenda Item Number 16, American Rescue Plant ARP, status of projects. Commissioner DeWitt, Commissioner Lenny, have a question?
We've gone over most of the projects. We had our meeting on 22nd. We've done the emergency management, we talked about the parking lot, the Expo restrooms are going to need a full lean engineering correction.
Yes, and he has already been informed, I can assure you.
Sir.
Madam Arken, was there anything else that we discussed that...
We're, we're continuing to work forward to get these quotes in. We're just, everybody's very busy. Our construction partners are very busy, and we're just awaiting, very patiently.
We didn't get any quotes in for the EOC, the building.
We got none for the emergency management center.
The bids.
Or the IT build-out, not one, not one bid.
No, no bid packet, the bids were due last week, and me and Mr. Mercer were in the office, and he did make it over here to, in case anybody was here, and not one did we receive in for construction.
So now we've talked about reaching out further, like putting in the Houston paper, the Austin paper, you know, expanding out.
After we go to public bid and we fail to receive any qualified bids, does our, do we, do we obtain more flexibility and?
We have to rebid.
Okay, so we have to rebid one more time.
Let's go up for rebid, we're going to, we're going to rebid and do our due diligence.
Is this process going to get simpler?
No.
No? Okay, great.
No, it could, though. After the rebid, options could open up for our procurement, for sure. And they have before, when we've had difficulties in this situation, but we, we do have to do our due diligence, which is a rebid, which we are in the works doing now.
Great, thank you.
Yes, there is. I don't know, we, we've got some things in works, we're working with Pettis, working with Tinen.
Yeah, we're Tinen and Pettis. Bye.
It's like I get a new iWatch.
Looks like it.
Yeah.
That was easy.
That was, I didn't know I could do that. Wow.
Office K.
I'm not going to give you the secret, squirrel.
Yeah. What else? Anything else from ARP?
No, sir, that's it.
Okay, thank you all.
No, we're good.
Madam Ocker, is there anything else?
No, 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 we're good.
Thank you, Judge.
That's wonderful, thank you all. Agenda items 17 and 18, we don't have any, well, I don't think, I'll just go ahead and call them out, but I don't think there's anything to add here. Agenda item number 17, Hurricane Harvey, Texas General Land Office, GLO, Community Development Block Grant, CDDG, status and project update, anything?
I don't, I don't have anything from anybody. I have not received any word on anything going on with them on.
Okay, moving on. Agenda item number 18, approve Texas opioid settlement agreements. We don't have any settlement agreements. Again, as I have expressed the last time, our attorneys representing us in the opioid lawsuits have asked that we make that a standing agenda item in the event that a settlement agreement comes up, because they anticipate many settlement agreements this summer. So there's nothing there, so we'll move on. We have no executive session items. Move on to agenda item number 19, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?